It's 5:01.
See the power you give with that?
Things got power. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. It's now 5:01. I'll start this with a roll call. Commissioner Floyd.
Here.
Commissioner Burdette, I am here. The chairman is out today. Commissioner Deloach.
Here.
Commissioner Loper.
Here.
And Commissioner Kiefer.
Here.
For that, if everybody please rise and we'll have invocation by Commissioner Deloach and pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. Please be with us and help us do your will, Lord. Help us move the county forward and help our citizens' needs out as best we can. We ask that you please be with our federal and state and our local leaders, Lord. Please put your hand on them and help them make decisions as you see fit, Lord. Help us remember that all good things come through you, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have agenda approval. Do we have any changes, Mercl?
No, sir, we do not.
That in mind, could I get a...
Make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second. Some motion by Commissioner Kiefer, a second by Commissioner Floyd. And next up is item six.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Yeah, all in favor of the agenda. Please say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, say no, or is it... It's been a while since I ran a meeting, so please bear with me.
It's okay, we got you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm in good hands, but even as vice chair last time, we don't get a lot of practice. We might get two or three during the whole year.
It's awkward when you don't do it all the time.
It is, it is. So next up will be the minutes. This is item six, and I believe we had an issue with some of the minutes from... Was it the retreat?
Not the retreat. We have a correction, and let me find which item it is. Okay, so that correction is going to be related to new business number three from our February 6th meeting. There was, it's a copy and paste situation. There was a portion that was left in that should have been removed. That change has been corrected, so your minutes do reflect the changes as suggested by Commissioner Loper.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
With the noted changes.
With the noted changes.
So moved.
Second.
It's Commissioner Deloach with a second from Commissioner Kiefer. And next up is public comments.
Vote.
Get a vote.
Oh, sorry. I missed it again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in disapproval, no?
Did not vote because I was not there for retreat minutes.
Yeah, that's correct. Can he still vote on minutes, or no?
He can, but I mean, it's up to you, yeah.
So I'll make a note that Commissioner Loper abstained from that vote. And then, now we move to correspondence or public comments. The comments shall pertain to the agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, please clearly state your name in the microphone before commencing to speak. I'll make a note also that all the correspondence and documents for the meeting are located in the clerk's office and on the Board of Commissioners' website. So next up will be the consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for a debate or discussion, this item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda. So I'll start with item one. It's consideration to approve to renew the Ducky Quest service contract for the Tax Commissioner's Office. Item number two, consideration to renew a memorandum of understanding between the sexual assault response team and the Effingham County Correctional Institution for forensic examination services. Item number three is consideration to approve to renew the public Wi-Fi service agreement with Planters Communications LLC for a one-year period from March 2024 to March 2025. Item number four, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm an assurances and maintenance agreement to FEMA for an existing generator grant application. Item number five, consideration to approve to submit a grant application to the Georgia Department of Agriculture, GDA, Dog and Cat Sterilization Grant Program. And finally, number six, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm amended resolution number 024-004 to include the fee for the office of State Court Judge. And this was originally approved on January 16th of '24. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Loper, a second by Commissioner Deloach. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any nays? And it carries. And next, we have unfinished business. And I'll make a note that this contains items held from our previous agenda. First up, we have a sketch plan. It's item number one. Planning Board recommends approving application by MRD Partners LLC for a sketch plan located on McCall Road for Horizon Business Center, Zone I-1, map number 450D, parcels number 4A, 4B, and 5 in the 2nd District. And this Chelsea.
Hi, and Steve, not Chelsea, but welcome. So, yes, this is the sketch hand approval for Horizon Business Center. I believe it was brought up today that the access was not going to be off of Goshen, right? It was going to be off of Effingham Parkway, and so I would just make sure we make that note in there if you vote on it, okay?
Off of Gateway, right?
I mean Gateway, sorry, yeah.
Just clarify.
Yeah, sorry.
The one in the packet, we did have the old one in there, but requested the new one that's been provided, so we shouldn't make any more notes other than that. Are we okay with that?
The new version has been provided?
It has been provided, correct?
Yes.
We just need to get a copy of it.
Okay.
And the material difference is the interest for the truck interest. It was on the old one, it was listed on McCall, and the new one's on Gateway instead.
And so, this is 156 square, thousand-square-foot building with 30 docking positions, two drive-in ramps, 18 trailer positions. It's proposed on the north, and the west is surrounded by OmniTrak's industrial development along McCall Road. The 300-foot undisturbed buffer along the subdivision to south is already in place. And then, the, along the industrial zone property, there's the 25-foot proposed undisturbed buffer. Those are already in place with the new buffer ordinance. And then, the applicant has asked for a variance to the buffers along McCall Road. The proposed buffer is 25 feet.
Was anything on the berm in there as well, Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, so you reviewed this item at the October 23rd meeting, and it was postponed until November 7th, and then postponed again at the January meeting until February 20th. So, the planning board and staff approved alternative one.
You want to have any comments on this one? I will say, I appreciate the engineer on this, working with me closely. Really wanted to help protect the people around there, went along with their request to keep the traffic off McCall, which was our desire to begin with. And just did a great job working, coming along beside us and taking care of our constituents. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the sketch plan.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Burdette, and a second by Commissioner Kiefer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone with a no, and it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might have the next one too, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
So, I'll let you read it first.
This is the second reading. This is item two in unfinished business. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Eric Smith for conditional use for a rural business located at 445 Golden Drive, map number 450A, parcel number 56 in the 2nd District.
So you've seen this the first time, and you added a condition at the Board of Commissioners' meeting on February 6th. That condition was that the business be solely conducted behind the home and not encroached in the front yard. And so the applicant has agreed to those conditions, and so this is the second reading.
Yes, sir. Any questions or comments? Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Burdette, a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone with no, and it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was another one. I appreciated the constituent working with us on that one as well. I talked with the planning board on that, and that was one thing that he mentioned that, for some reason, wasn't on the stipulations. So that'll move us on to new business. This will be Ms. Sarah. Item one is consideration to approve an additional position, deputy coroner, for the coroner's office.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Sarah Mouseoff, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. So tonight, me and Mr. David Exley, the coroner, are requesting additional position, a deputy coroner, just so that he can have some help. We, obviously with an increased population, he's got an increase in caseload. Every now and then, he might want a night or a weekend off and have some family time or something going on. No increase to our head count, okay, because this will be a 1099 contract, so no benefits will go to this person. Again, they're just paid by the case, which we would be paying anyways to him or one of the other deputy coroners. And if you have any additional questions, he's here to answer.
Is it part-time position, or just as needed?
As needed, yeah, per.
It's not something you really want to see get busier, but...
But I mean, naturally, yeah.
The population's going to warrant it.
Unfortunately, going by what happened this weekend, we're going to need a bunch more.
Yes, sir.
What happened? Income unspared.
Yes. Yeah.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
That's a motion to approve by Commissioner Loper, and a second by Commissioner Deloach. All those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Anyone in denial of it, and it carries.
Get some rest.
No doubt. And item two, a new business. Consideration to approve to ratify and affirm an indication of a roundabout support letter for a roundabout at Highway 30 at Collic Helming Road.
Yes, sir. Allison Bruton, Procurement and Capital Projects. This is a ratification. This letter was needed for submission. And there is a development agreement for this that's already been approved by the board as well. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
That's a motion to approve. Commissioner Deloach, a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone for denial, say nay, and it carries. And it's another one for Ms. Allison, because this is number three. Consideration to approve resolution number 024-010 for the surplus of various items.
Yes, sir. So there are some vehicles, various pieces of equipment. They're cleaning up over at the Public Works Campus, so that's all the stuff you see listed. Staff recommends alternative one.
Questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion to approve alternative one by Commissioner Deloach, and a second by Commissioner Loper. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in disapproval, please say no, and the item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four is a consideration to approve resolution number 024-011 to amend the 2024 fiscal year budget. Mr. Mark Barnes.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnes, Finance Director. This budget amendment is pretty small, and it just allocates a little bit of additional funding for the operating supplies in the Recreation Department to kind of help offset some of the expenses related to the baseball season. Staff recommends alternative number one to approve the budget amendment for fiscal year '24.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion to approve alternative one, Commissioner Deloach, and a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in denial, say nay, and it carries. And number five, Guinness Marcus. Consideration to approve addendum number 16 to amend the Effingham County financial policy.
Yes, sir. Our staff recommends approving addendum number 16 to the Effingham County financial policies. This addendum defines surplus fund balance and its uses. It defines the limitations on debt that the county can uptake, and it also defines the county investment policy, which to this point, we haven't had a clearly defined policy. These, all three of these changes are recommended by Davenport, the financial advisors. There was a change put in there on one of the words that Commissioner Deloach had mentioned, referencing the total debt that we could take on. It had reference sploshed in the wording, and we also added T-sploshed to that as well, and got that updated version to the county clerk earlier. But all three of these changes are recommended by Davenport, and they are going to be kind of helpful when we're meeting with Moody's tomorrow, actually, to have the credit rating updated for the county. And staff recommends alternative number one to approve the changes.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
That's a motion to approve alternative one by Commissioner Deloach, a second by Commissioner Kiefer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone denying, please say no, and it carries.
Thank you.
And number seven is consideration to approve a quick claim deed and terminated easement agreement between Effingham County Board of Commissioners.
Number six.
I'm sorry, I missed one. I did skip one. I apologize. Number six, consideration to approve resolution number 024-009 to condemn a property located at 224 Courthouse Road, Springfield, related to the Baker Park improvements.
Yeah, this is something we've discussed numerous times with regards to a property that we need to acquire associated with the Baker Park. And we've kind of gone through the process, and this is the point that we're at.
This is one we swapped out with.
Tried to, yes.
Yeah.
We tried.
Any other questions or comments? An entertaining motion? An entertaining motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Loper, a second by Commissioner Deloach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone denying, say no, and it carries. Now we're on number seven. Consideration to approve a quick claim deed and terminate an easement agreement between Effingham County Board of Commissioners and Amy M. Helming and Vicky Tooten-Renfro located across a property on Brogdon Road. This is Stephanie.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So staff was approached by the property owners stating that they would no longer wish to entertain this agreement. After consulting with EOM, EOM did determine that we do not have a need to retain that easement. So a deed was drafted by the county attorney as well as an easement agreement. Staff recommends approval of those items.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Kiefer, a second by Commissioner Deloach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone denying, say no, and it carries. I believe you already did reports from our staff and commissioners. I believe we have a need for a quick executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, property, and pending litigation.
Second.
Second. That was Mr. Deloach with a second by Ms. Commissioner Kiefer. We'll return in a few minutes.